Okay, now I call the order. The Board of Supervisors Business Meeting, Tuesday, February the 15th, 2022, 7:00 PM, at the Board Meeting Room 39 Bank Street, Chatham, Virginia. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cheshire?
Here.
Mr. Dalton?
Here.
Mr. Dudley?
President.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
President.
Mr. Barksdale?
Yes.
Mr. Ingram?
Yes.
If you would, take a moment and have a moment of silence, please. Okay, thank you. If you would, stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any items to be added to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Other things that were going to be added that was discussed earlier. And location number, let's do 7Q first. Landfill contract as item 7Q. Also 13A is going to be grit in the library appropriation as item 13A. And 13B is internship program that we worked on in the work session this morning and that is going to be this afternoon, 13B.
Okay, have a second.
I'll be the mover.
Second. Any discussion on that? All right, what about an approval of the agenda, please? Need a motion? Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Seven, four and seven, seven with, okay. As far as the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Barksdale. What about a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion on that? Okay, presentations, what do we have?
Presentation, Ms. Ross.
I'm sorry, Cindy. Mr. Chairman, on 8A, we have presentations and Ms. Everlena Ross will give us the annual report for the Pennsylvania County Community Action. Thank you, sir. Good evening, Ms. Ross. Good to see you.
Again, good evening to each of you, to the Honorable Ingram and members of the Board of Supervisors, good evening, and thank you all for inviting me here this afternoon.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm Everlena Ross, Director of the Pennsylvania County Community Action, and on behalf of our Board of Directors and the staff, which Mr. Barksdale is a member, we're pleased to come to you tonight to say thank you. Thank you for your past support, thank you for your current support, and thank you for the support that I know we will receive in the future because we are all working for the same purpose, helping citizens to help themselves and becoming economically stable. Tonight, I want to briefly walk, briefly through some slides to show you the highlights of what we are doing and how we are spending, how we're good stewards of the investment that you all have given to us, coupled with the other funding sources that we have, to show you the impact of lives changed in Pennsylvania County. We service other jurisdictions, but tonight I'm only talking about Pennsylvania County, the county that I live in and the county I'm proud to be in. So with that being said, I think the first thing I do is hit go. Well, I need to go back. Okay, here we go. I'm excited by this because I might mess up, but just bear with me. Okay. I think most of you know that we were started in 1964 when President Lyndon Johnson signed the Economic Opportunity Act. We are the community action agency serving the cities of Danville, Martinsville, and the counties of Pennsylvania and Henry County, and we have a Head Start program in Campbell County. I have a motto that I don't read every slide because I know that we all can read and you all have a lot to do, so I'll just hit some highlights. We have current programs, we have our Head Start, weatherization, Section 8, tax, Virginia Tax Assistance Program, Temporary Assistance for Needy Families. We get funding and support from about 14 different agencies to include Pennsylvania County, the City of Danville. We partner with about 14 different components, which is, and you'll see them listed there, Department of Social Services, both Danville and Pennsylvania County, PATH, Access to Health, Pennsylvania County Schools, Danville Schools, Pennsylvania Health Department. Our mission is to provide opportunities for individuals and families to overcome barriers, to gain self-sufficiency, and improve the quality of life. The programs that we operate are listed as follows. I think most folk will know that they know about Head Start. We have a Head Start program. And let me just stop a moment and say, because we are affected by COVID, as you all are, our agency has been closed to the public since COVID began. However, services have increased. We have gotten our technology base so that all of our staff can work from home, so that is not a problem, and we have publicized it, so service continues and we're still providing service. Our Head Start program, as you see, again, Pennsylvania County, we are, our enrollment is 242 children. But Pennsylvania County, we have classrooms at the Joseph Galloway Center, which houses three classrooms, the Bethel Baptist Church, the Shiloh Baptist Church. Because of COVID, most of the training is done at home via pads, and we use different systems to make sure that our Head Start kids get the current training. The weatherization program, again, we go into Pennsylvania County, and I did this report from July 20 to December 2021 because a lot of our programs do not start on June, July 1st. They have different starting dates, so it's just easier to do it that way. From June, July 20 until June 21, you can see that we weatherized 10 homes and the fund spent was $84,627. From July 21 to December 21, we've already done 10 homes for this fiscal year. The next program is the Virginia Cares, which is the Ex Offender Program. We work with, this is a program that's designed to work with parolees getting ready to be re-entered into the community. We go, we meet with the jail, Sheriff Taylor's Jail, and we work with the inmates there that are getting ready to be released. As you know, I'm sure that the jails have been closed, so we have not been able to get into the jails to meet with the staff one-on-one. However, we are doing bags to tell them, these are the services that, once you are released, contact us and we can assist you. The HOPR program, Housing Opportunities with People with AIDS, a lot of folk don't want to mention AIDS, but there is a lot of AIDS in this community, so we have a program that addresses the needs of those clients. Again, in Pennsylvania County, we've only had two this program year. The Temporary Assistance for Needy Families, and we refer to it as TANF, that's where we can pay the rent for people that have received an eviction notice if you have children in the household under the age of 18. We can also pay your utility bills, again, if you have children under the 18. So you can see that this, from July 20, the number of families that we have served to pay their utility bills and their rent. The rent goes, nothing goes to the client. It goes directly to the City of Danville, to Mecklenburg Utility and Dominion Power. And for the rent, they go to the landlords, so we have, so that's how we do that. The Senior Program, I think most of us, if we have not heard about it, we're getting near that age, so we will be hearing about it soon, enables older adults to enjoy healthy, productive, and independent lives in their home. And there's two sections to that, is the Congregate Meal Site, in which we have sites located throughout Danville, Pennsylvania County. I'm just talking about Pennsylvania County now, that's right, so I don't need to go to Danville. We have sites located in Pennsylvania County. But because of COVID, none of those sites are open. But we have drivers that take meals to their house, every house, every day, and on Fridays, we do two, one for Saturday, so hopefully they have meals to last them. But the sites are still closed. And we do transportation for medical, for diabetes. The Section 8 Housing Trust Program, again, that's a landlord, we, the landlords will call us and say, we have a house that we want you all to rent, so we fill those, we fill those houses, and the landlord gets money from Virginia Housing Department, so it helps everybody, it helps the county. The Summer Feeding Program, we had a huge summer feeding program until COVID came. We did, but because of COVID, we just had to limit it to Pennsylvania County, and it's done through our staff. Our staff do the volunteer, the cooking, the driving, and everything. And you can see the number of children that we serve in these locations. We only operate Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. We've already gotten about 18 families that have called and said, we want to be on your waiting list. The Virginia Income Tax Assistance Program, or we call it VITA, is going on as we speak. I got a call just before I left because we are operating primarily out of the Danville office, but we had some difficulty there with utilities, I don't know what it was, but the office went black for a while. But we are operating that program Monday through Friday. They come in at 8:30. On Wednesdays, we operate in Chatham. We service clients in Chatham, and you can see, and I think this was impressive, this is Pennsylvania County, for the total federal refund was $1,748,550. And for the state, Virginia, $244,213. And the last program is Project Discovery, that's the access to high schools. In Pennsylvania County, we are in all, well, we would be in all for us, high schools, if it were not for COVID, but because of COVID, we're doing the Zooms, and we're meeting outside, like at our office and in the Danville office. Our kids will come there on Saturdays, and we do all the educational curriculums that we have. So with that said, so I just want to briefly tell you that, for the investment that we get from you all, thank you, we're good stewards of that. But our Senior Program, last year, we spent over $200,000. For the Section 8 was $36,000, for Project Discovery, $485 per student. And for the TANF program, that's the program that we can pay utilities and rent, we have spent $60,000. And the Head Start, our Head Start program is approximately $7,500 per student. And for the VITA program, I gave you those figures. So with that being said, I want to encourage you all, if you know anybody that needs their taxes done, they're free. We file them, the staff is volunteer, we got a 100% completion rate last year, the number is 434-549-8220. And you, if you earn up to $74,000 a year, we can pay, we can do your taxes free. So our future goals, oh, did I, did I flip? Yeah. Our future goals is to engage our, to engage with you all, to our community and envision the county's future. We have a good county, we are looking for greater things to happen, and we are destined, we are determined, we have set ourselves to be a part of those growth. Continue to embrace diversity, equity, and inclusion. Maintain a culture that values and supports our employees. Improve residents and customer experiences through efficient, high-quality service and continuous invocation. Serve, serve on boards and organizations to promote growth of Pennsylvania County and recruit high caliber employees. Our upcoming event, which will include a fundraiser, is almost every year COVID has impacted, we have a Community Awareness Day. Many of you came to our Community Awareness Day last year, which was held at the Old Dutch Parking Lot. It was fantastic. It was huge. We had about 18 different vendors there, so that will happen again in May, and we will have a fundraiser. A couple of our board members wanted to have a, a mic strut, so you will be getting your invitation. We have a pledge list. It's going to be on Saturday, May 21, 2022, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon. Again, on behalf of my board, my bosses, our staff, we thank you for your past, we thank you for your present, we look forward to a long-lasting relationship, and if you have any questions, please ask.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Any questions?
I'd like to say.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Ross.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that report and the things that you do to keep our citizens' welfare.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Please come by and visit us, we'd love to have you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, Hearing of the Citizens. Each person addressing the board, under Hearing of the Citizens, shall be a resident or land owner of the county or the registered agent of such resident or land owner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an audible tone, a voice for the record, unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during Hearing of the Citizens. Our remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the Citizens shall last for a maximum of 45 minutes. Any individual that has signed up to speak during said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Ms. Clerk, we have anybody signed up?
Yes, sir. Jim Scares?
Jim Scares, come forward, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Jim Scares, and I live in the Westover District. If I were here tonight to grade this new board's performance, you would get a failing grade of F. Your first act was to fire the best county administrator this county has had in the past 25 years. David Smitherman had his hand in every bit of economic development in this county for the past five years. The current chairman of this board stated that losing Smitherman was not a big deal, that he was not, that he was overpaid and not a game changer. Mr. Smitherman worked on agreements with the following companies, Morgan Olson, Walraven Incorporated, MEP Limited, Tyson Foods, Arrow Farms, and Staten River Plastics. Mr. Smitherman, along with the county attorney, brokered an agreement with three solar panel companies that netted the county $7 million upfront in a total of $42 million in tax revenue for the next 30 years. I would agree, I would disagree with Chairman Vick that Mr. Smitherman indeed was a game changer for this county. In the November GOP, County GOP meeting, when rumors of Mr. Smitherman's termination were brought up, State Representative Danny Marshall stated that Mr. Smitherman was working on the biggest economic development project in the world, and it would be a huge mistake to terminate him. My question to this board is, what is the status of that project? Is the company still coming here after you publicly humiliated and fired Mr. Smitherman who was working on that agreement? To compound the huge mistake of terminating Mr. Smitherman, you four supervisors decided to bring Clarence Mundy back as an interim county administrator. Three of you may not know the condition he left the county in five years ago, but Mr. Barksdale should. He was a member of the board then. He left the county on the verge of bankruptcy. The Board of Supervisors had to borrow money to make payroll and put the county on emergency spending. You have traded one of the best county administrators in the state for one who resigned in disgrace after bringing, burying the county in debt. And the kicker is, you're paying him more money an hour than you were Smitherman, but Smitherman was overpaid. It seems like four of you are more interested in playing political games instead of looking out for the best interest of this county and its citizens. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Ms. Scares. Thank you, Jim.
Wayne Robertson?
Mr. Wayne Robertson, come forward, please. Good to see you, Mr. Robertson.
My name is Wayne Robertson. I'm in Mr. Warren's district. I'm here to talk about two different but related topics. If I say something incorrect, I want somebody to correct me, my feelings won't get hurt. First thing is the trash tax. I was here a year ago asking the Board of Supervisors to do away with the trash tax. It continues to be a burden on many citizens, especially senior citizens. In addition to that, the county has collected a big pile of money every year for the trash tax, the landfill and the equipment and all the things they're doing should be taken care of by now. It's really time to get rid of that trash tax. One of the reasons that somebody told me is that, that you need the trash tax is to, is to collect money for the new courthouse. Well, my feeling is, we don't need a new courthouse. The one that we have has some old sections in it, that's for sure, but it's adequate for what we need. That courthouse is doing what it needs to do. And in addition to that, the people who work there are doing a really good job. I go over there to research deeds and talk to the commissioners and different business that I have with the county. Everybody's just as good to work with as they can be. That's what's really important, not a new building. In addition to that, I hear that the judge has decreed that we have to have a new courthouse. The thing is, a judge is unelected. Taxation without representation was one of the reasons we fought the Revolutionary War well over 200 years ago. My feeling here, I want, I want to ask you to do away with the trash tax and do away with the plans to put a new courthouse here. I'll back up a little bit. I've heard several reasons for a new courthouse, mold and asbestos, and people on opposite sides of a court, of a court case, meeting each other in the halls. They're all things that can be taken care of without a new courthouse. So I'd like to ask you to do away with the trash tax and do away with the plans for a new courthouse that we don't need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, sir. My name is Michael Hughes. I'm in the Tunstall District. I'm here today, let me back up, I'll talk about the taxes, the way the assessment went, and how we're going to deal with it. I am a resident of the county, and I'm also on the Board of Equalization. I appealed several of my properties through Bright Minds, and they were very nice, very accommodating. They, I couldn't see anybody because they were so booked up, so they did a phone interview. After the phone interview, I was told that I would be notified of the results. I never was notified. Stacy Moreau asked me to be on the board again this time. I was on it last four years ago, and I accepted, and then I realized I hadn't been notified of the decision, so I, I called the Commissioner of Revenues office, and I was told that, that they were not going to do that this time. They were going to bypass that and put all of the appeals on the Board of Equalization. I don't think we've got enough time this year to go through that, so that's one point. The second point is, it's not fair, in an equalization, we were told that, and you can put yourself in this position, if you don't agree with the way your house is being assessed, you have to come to the Board of Equalization, you have to give us numbers of comparable houses to yours that were priced a certain way and that yours was overpriced. That's what we have to judge it by. And if you put yourself in a citizen's position, do you think you can go around and knock on doors, say, two or three miles of where you live, and say, hey, I want to know what you, your house was assessed at? You know what kind of, you know what kind of response you're going to get. So that's not fair to the, to the county or to the residents if they have that process. The first process was, you know, supposed to be a one-on-one with Bright Minds. And also, and I told somebody this, that this, this process is a representation of the county, so if a resident was going to come here and buy a house, they would see that, or a business, and saw that this is the way we, we do our taxation, I think it would be a negative mark. I hope, and one more thing, I talked to somebody that I think what could be, and I'm not telling you guys what to do, but if you would consider leaving the tax base where it is, or the assessment, excuse me, the tax assessment where it is, and adjust the tax rate to whatever you need to cover our costs, I think that would be fair. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Take care. Welcome, Ms. Bowman.
Hi, everyone. It's a shame you got to bring two pair of glasses to figure out what you're going to be able to see from here. Does it work? Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Chairman Ingram, members of the board and staff. My name is Brenda Bowman. I reside in the Chatham Blair's District. I am a former member of this distinguished board. I know from personal experience the amount of time and dedication it takes, and I thank you for your service to Pennsylvania County. Tonight, I speak in support of the amendment to reinstate the Code of Conduct. When I saw this request on the agenda for tonight's meeting, I was surprised. During my term on the board, I attended a Virginia Associations of Counties conference, which included a workshop on standards of ethical conduct for elected officials. I learned that most counties had a standard of conduct in place, but that Pennsylvania County did not. After receiving input from VACO and other counties, our Legislative Committee presented standards of conduct to the board. This was met with opposition from several of the supervisors, who made it clear that they did not support the idea. But with a 4-3 vote, the standards of conduct were approved and adopted. Three supervisors were opposed to the idea and refused to sign the Model of Excellence. I wonder if the constituents of their respective districts were ever aware of this. I've now learned that in 2018, the Code of Ethics was eliminated from your bylaws with unanimous vote. I'm sure this also came as a surprise to you, Mr. Barksdale, since it was removed after you and I both left the board. While I was on the board, I and other board members were at the receiving end of bullying and verbal attacks from fellow board members. My stomach stayed in knots, I never knew what to expect. I was not prepared to be verbally attacked by my own peers. It was a turbulent time for our county. We were without a county administrator, the Economic Development Department had been cut by a 4-3 board, our fellow colleague and chairman of the- Our fellow colleague and chairman of the board passed away of a heart attack. He had tried so hard to get the board to work together. I truly believe the stress of what we were going through had an effect on his health. With his death, I, as the vice chair, became chair, but a 4-3 board removed me as chair. The reporters couldn't get enough, and for months, we were the headlines. So here we are, almost 10 years later, witnessing similar behavior. I ask that this board focus on doing the job you were elected to do, and that is to take care of the county's business and to work together with honesty and integrity for the common good of the citizens. I respectfully ask you to refrain from the constant current attacks on each other. The citizens elected you as leaders to serve in a professional manner. You work for us. Our taxes provide your salaries, expenses, cell phones, laptops, and iPads, and home internet. We deserve better. The Commonwealth of Virginia and the world is also watching us. And again, it is embarrassing to see this play out in the media. I'm almost done. Why would any global business want to come to Pennsylvania County when all they see is the bickering and how others are treated? We need to be better than this. I hope that having a code of ethics in place will calm everyone down, establish professional respect, civility, and decorum among all members. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Ms. Clerk, anyone else?
Michael Neal.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
And ladies. Okay, not going to try to take much of your time. My name is Mike Neal. I'm Fire Chief, Ringo Fire and Rescue. I've been in fire and rescue 53 years, served 19 years as Assistant Chief of Ringo. That's my 31st year as Fire Chief, and I'm proud to be a member of that department, okay? Also, be a proud member to be of the Fire Association in this county, which has came so far with all our fire and rescue in this county. Biggest thing I wanted to applaud to you, myself, and I'm speaking for a lot of other people, the last meeting, y'all ceased on doing the audits. We appreciate y'all doing that. We've got departments in this county, I call Gretna, I'm going to call Chatham, that were town fire departments 65, 70 years ago. They were the first two. Ringo was the first rural fire department in 58, okay? 42 years and 22, well, 64, 65 years in existence. We made it along good without having governments come in and audit this and audit that. And I understand that we have to be accountable. That's the word, accountable, what we do. I know Mr. Warren, the last meeting, said if he wants to give money, he wants to make sure it's accountable to a nonprofit agency, and I agree with you. I get calls all the time, "Can you send me this money? Can you send me this money?". I don't know if I'm Adam. St. Jude's, you get a lot of stuff. I see them on TV. God's Pit Crew, as an example, is great. Randy Johnson, great guy. Salvation Army in Danville, great. God's Stole House, great. All 21 fire departments in this county are great, and they gave a pile of community support with them. When you fight a fire department in this county, you're going to fight the whole community, okay? Because that community's got roots from 58 to 50 to 45, or whenever they started. You've got grandmas and grandpas and church people and mom and pop stores. They've got roots in these fire departments. So people know them, okay? And at the end of the day, and I'm just going to use my board for example, we have 11 people. I've got financial advisors. I've got business contractors. I've got guys running insurance companies. I've got church leaders. I've got business leaders in the county and theirself. I've got former financial agriculture people that work on county boards. Pennsylvania County Water Service Authority, these people work for Pennsylvania County. Now, if I can't trust them to hand my money to a board, who are you going to give it to? And I make it clear now, I'm not going to call this name. Our sheriff in this county is on the board records. I'm former clerk of courts on the board records, 40 years from a county. If I can't go give that department money, I say, "Keep it. Put it in your pocket and keep it." You've got these departments running 12, 15, 1800 calls a year. If you can't see what they're doing in your neighborhood, you know, I guess it ain't worth it. I had, never had nobody question us. And our department, I know I'm getting close, Vic, our department from where we had at Ringo, at this day, our new station we built, we have an 18,000 square foot building, we have 12 trucks, 16 bays, 7.44 acres, helicopter pad, everything down there is paid for. It's paid for. So we took our money, put it back into our business on what we got, and we done it in the right place. We're not sitting here $2 million in debt, okay? So we used that. So I appreciate, appreciate that, and just a shout out to the firemen in the last month. Thousand EMS calls from this county. We've had big manufacturing fires, ice storms, plane crashes in our area, a lot of grass fires. All these departments in this county in the last six weeks have really busted their cans in getting out of here. That's from Hurt to Ringo and Cascade from Law Grove, and just a big shout out, shout out to them. Thank you for the work that they do in this department. Thank y'all.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chief.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
That's all we have? All right. Thank y'all so much. We're up to public hearings, rezoning public hearings. Pursuant to Article 5, Division 6 of the Pennsylvania County Zoning Ordinance, the Board of Supervisors has been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, the board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. The board must ensure that all of its decisions and regulations be directed to these goals that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interests of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its prosperity. Case number one, public hearing, case R-22-001, Garnet Short. Ms. Ragsdale, thank you. I need to open the public hearing at 7:39.
Case R-22-001, Garnet Short has petitioned to rezone seven acres located on Gallows Road in the State River Election District from R1 Residential Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to combine with an adjacent parcel of land zoned A1. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. On January 4th, 2022, the Planning Commission, recommended by an 8 to 0 vote with no opposition, that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Ms. Garnet Short is here to represent the petition.
All right. Mr. Short, do you have anything you'd like to say? You want to come up? You don't have anything to say? Okay. Well, does anyone else have to like to speak?
We don't have anyone signed up.
Okay, that's great. Well, I will close that public hearing at 7:40 PM. Thank you so much. Have a motion to rezone this property, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, this is in my district. So in case R-22-001, make a motion to approve the rezoning of 7.0 acres from R1 Residential Subdivision District to A1 Agriculture District to allow for property lines to be adjusted. The rezoning would be consistent with the county's comprehensive plan.
Thank you, sir. What about? Mr. Warren, thank you, sir. All right, any conversation? Anything? All right, cast your votes, gentlemen. All right, your property has been rezoned. Thank y'all for coming. This is case number two, public hearing, R-22-002, Christopher Meadows. Ms. Ragsdale? And I open this public hearing at 7:41.
Case R-22-002, Christopher Meadows has petitioned to rezone 11.905 acres located on State Road 729, Kentuck Road in the Dan River Election District from R1 Residential Subdivision District and MHP Residential Manufactured Housing Park to A1 Agricultural District to allow property lines to be adjusted. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. On January 4th, 2022, the Planning Commission, recommended by an 8 to 0 vote with no opposition, that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Christopher Meadows is here to represent the petition.
Thank you. Mr. Meadows, you'd like to come forward and speak? You're good. Okay, sir, well, thank you for being here. Having said that, I will close the public hearing at 7:42 and ask for a motion. Mr. Cheshire?
I'll make a motion. Thank you, sir.
What about a second?
Second.
I can tell which one of y'all did that.
It's a winner. Y'all flip a coin.
Any comments, gentlemen? Okay. Go ahead and cast your vote. All right, sir, your property has been rezoned. Thank you for coming. Open the public hearing for case number R-22-003, Ms. Ragsdale, at 7:43.
Case R-22-003, JEL Incorporated Doing Business as Green Genie Incorporated, has petitioned to rezone 213.95 acres located on State Road 686, Elkhorn Road, in the Banister Election District from R1 Residential Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for the future expansion of the existing campground. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. On January 4th, 2022, the Planning Commission, recommended by an 8 to 0 vote with no opposition, that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, a representative from Elkhorn Lake is here to represent the petition.
Okay. Would you like to come forward?
I have a few other questions.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Well, having said that, I'll close this hearing at 7:44. I'm sorry. Do I have a motion to approve this?
Case R-22-003, I make a motion to approve the rezoning of 237.5 acres from Residential Subdivision District to A1 Agriculture to allow all the possible expansion of the existing campground. The rezoning would be consistent with the county's plan.
Okay, sir, thank you. What about a second? Second. Thank you, Ms. Dalton. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just for the record, I think we should clear that it's 213.95 acres.
Thank you, sir. All right. No other comments, gentlemen, cast your votes. All right, sir, your property has been rezoned. Thank you for being here. All right, other public hearings. Each person addressing the board under a public hearing shall step up, give his or her name and district, and/or his or her place of residency for non-county residents in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. Speakers for a group shall be limited to 10 minutes. Speakers shall conclude their remarks at that time unless the consent of the board is affirmatively given to extend the speaker's allotted time. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. This is a public hearing regarding our county public safety ordinance revision under our Code, Section 11-2. Just to give you some history on that for those watching at home and those in the audience, we decided as a majority to restructure the membership of the Fire and Rescue Commission, and with that, we had to advertise the change in this ordinance. And with that, we decided that each supervisor would be given one vote, so that's seven members. We did not mess with the quadrants, the matrix, or anything else that had went into the evolution of the Fire and Rescue Commission, but with that, each of those four quadrants, we left it up to the Fire and Rescue organizations within those quadrants to offer up a business leader. And with that, you would have 11 votes. The Fire and Rescue Association would have one vote in case they needed a tiebreaker, and it was just the fairest way to do it across the board. So not only did my colleagues have an option to cast a vote, all fire and rescue agencies had an opportunity to offer up a business leader. And so, having said that, I now open the public hearing. Do we have anybody signed up?
Yes. Jim Skares.
Doing double duty tonight, I see.
Good evening. My name is Jim Skares, and I live in the Westover District, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Danville, Pennsylvania County Tea Party. One of the founding tenants of the Tea Party was keeping the government accountable for the spending of our tax dollars and being transparent in their actions to the citizens they represent. The changes that four of you supervisors are proposing to the Fire and Rescue Commission have nothing to do about transparency and accountability to the citizens of this county. On the contrary, your actions of terminating Mr. Smithman and voting to do away with the financial oversight and accountability of the fire and rescue agencies is doing the exact opposite. I thought I knew why two members of the previous board wanted Mr. Smithman fired, but after one of those members decided not to run for reelection, it struck me odd that chiefs for two fire and rescue agencies were actively campaigning for and endorsing on social media, two candidates running for the board that were also calling for Mr. Smithman's ouster. I cannot understand why someone running a 501(c)(3) would jeopardize their agency's tax-exempt status by going against IRS rules pertaining to nonprofits. It didn't make any sense to me until last month's board meeting when four of you, including two that the chiefs endorsed, voted to do away with all financial oversight and accountability for fire and rescue agencies. My first thought was, what is it that they are trying to hide from the county board of supervisors and the citizens of this county whose tax dollars these agencies are using? My next thought was, this is why Mr. Smithman had to go, because he was the one who set up these oversight and accountability measures in the Fire and Rescue Commission to keep these agencies accountable to the board and the taxpayers. Now, the same four supervisors are proposing to change the makeup of the board for the Fire and Rescue Commission to add more member seats and to fill them with fire and rescue agency personnel. This will give them a voting majority and free rein in the Fire and Rescue Commission. After hearing about these proposals, I decided to fore you all financial records to include IRS Form 990s from the county that the county had on hand for all the fire and rescue agencies for the years 2018, 19, and 20. Imagine my surprise when my request was answered and the records supplied by the county showed that they didn't have a current Form 990 on file for any of the fire and rescue agencies. I then went to the IRS website to check their records. I had been told by numerous people online that these forms, Form 990s, could be found anywhere on the internet. Again, I was surprised to find that the IRS did not have current Form 990s on file for 11 of the county fire and rescue agencies. The most current for nine of those agencies was 2019, and two other agencies was 2018. After printing out the most current 990s on file with the IRS, I began to dig into them and found some very interesting and creative data. First off, all of these agencies are professionally being volunteer agencies, but according to records they answered on their 990s, 12 of these agencies show zero volunteers. One agency shows zero volunteers and 11 employees, with salaries and wages totaling $15,159. Another agency shows zero volunteers and 41 employees, with salaries totaling, and wages totaling $84,403. Yet another agency shows 25 volunteers and 16 employees, and one of the employees is the wife of the chief, and in 2018 was paid $8,560 for 52 hours of work, which equals over $164 an hour. In 2019, she took a pay cut to $8,340 for 52 hours of work, which is over $160 an hour. I found another agency that shows no employees but claimed $24,082 for EMS payroll. Another agency shows no employees, but their chief was paid $11,866. And finally, one agency reported zero volunteers and zero employees and claimed $48,425 for contract labor. One question I have is whether these salaries and wages were reported to the IRS on W2s for the people that received the income. I don't have an issue with these agencies paying their people stipends when they take a call, but don't come before this board and the tax-paying citizens of this county and tell us you are an all-volunteer agency when that is simply not the truth. Personally, I think it was a huge mistake to do away with the financial oversight and accountability. Personally, I think it was a huge mistake to do away with financial oversight and accountability for these agencies. At a minimum, there should be, they should be providing to the county board of supervisors the same financial statements and annual budgets that they provide foundations that they request grants from. That is, if they want to continue to receive tax funds from, funds from this county. Likewise, it will be a huge mistake handing over control of the Fire and Rescue Commission to the same good old boys that ran the Fire and Rescue Association. It raises serious concerns when the chief for Ringo Fire and Rescue stood up in a Fire and Rescue Commission meeting and admitted he didn't take an emergency call because he had already met his agency's quotas for the month and that it was a frequent flyer. He stated he would let the paid service take the call. With attitudes like this, what will happen when they have complete control of the commission, especially since it looks like they will get a rubber stamp from four supervisors on this board for everything they want? As it stands, now that the taxpayers of this county have financial questions or concerns about these agencies, they can't come to this board to get them answered. I guess we can always contact the IRS and voice our concerns to them in request they look into our questions since four supervisors on this board flushed all oversight and accountability for these agencies down the toilet. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else sign up to speak?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'll close the, uh, public hearing at seven fifty-three. Now, I ask for a motion to approve the change in our ordinance. So, do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Barksdale is making the motion. What about a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cheshire. Any discussion, gentlemen? Yes, sir, Mr. Warren?
I just have a couple of points to make, and it's not, uh, it's certainly not anti, have no attempt to be anti-Fire and Rescue. I've supported them at every turn during my tenure, uh, on the board. But I also feel it only fair to look at how the makeup of the current positions we have have fared and what they've done to serve Pennsylvania County. They certainly worked on developing a matrix to determine how funds were allocated, and, uh, with, uh, all due respect, the first time I heard about we needed a matrix so it was done fairly actually came from, uh, Chief Neal in a conversation I had with him. So, I, I do think that has been beneficial. We've all seen a continuous decline in volunteers. The commission has worked, as it currently stands, with county staff and the Fire Association to, uh, improve that to some degree, which I think speaks volumes for the commission. There was agencies that, uh, had very low response rates. I'm happy to report, I've said it several times, that over the last year, we had a fourteen percent increase in responses. I think that speaks again to the commission's work. We've also had concerns, and it's been talked about for a number of years, that we have very low participation from our minority community, uh, to work as volunteers in agencies. I always ask myself the question, why is that? And I think the commission was looking at some of those and, uh, trying to work with the association and staff to develop a marketing strategy that could, could rectify and approve some of that. I also want to remind everyone that one of the things that, uh, I found most disturbing and disheartening early on in my tenure as serving on this board was driving down fifty-eight one day knowing that we needed some amelances in Pennsylvania County. But one of our agencies had gone out of service, and one of the amelances that funds that were donated are taxpayer dollars that was given to the agency to help buy an amelance, and they were going out of service, was sold to another county. I, I find that to be really problematic when we have needs within the county, and that's why I believe we need to have good oversight, and that's why I did agree with and still agree with, uh, when we put money up as tax-paying citizens, we should be on the title to have some ownership. Uh, I had a big problem with an agency that we offered a free amelance to it, and rather than taking the amelance, uh, chose to buy their own. It appeared, from what the public stated, that it was over some decals and tags that read "One Team, One Service." I certainly hope no one in any organization that resides in Pennsylvania County is ashamed of your county in placing Pennsylvania County's name on any vehicle or having any problems with the motto "One Team, One Service." We all should be working for the same common goal, and that's serving the citizens in the best manner possible. I still have the same feelings that we need to, a lot more work needs to be done. I'm certainly not saying that I believe that the commission is perfect, uh, but to throw, uh, it out completely, uh, I just, uh, have trouble agreeing with. The, uh, commission, uh, also brought to light the unfair relationship we had between Pennsylvania County and Franklin County on funding the Cool Branch, and that absolutely has worked out to be beneficial to Cool Branch. I think if you talk to their people there, you'll find out they are in a better financial position than they've been in years. We had problems in Keeling, but the commission worked diligently to iron those out and rectify an unpleasant situation. And I would say reluctantly that I hate to say this, uh, but I do agree that, uh, Mr. Ingram made, uh, a statement that unfortunately is true, and that's the days of totally relying on volunteers are over. I wish that wasn't true, Mr. Ingram, but I think it's going to be necessary, especially from the EMS standpoint, that we have to provide proper funding to these organizations in order for them to be able to pay stipends or whatever's necessary to provide for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. And that's, uh, just a reality of today's world. I respect each one of these folks that volunteer to do this service and certainly have respect, uh, for the departments. I still stand fast in believing that collectively, if all of our EMS agencies could, could work together, and I think they can, uh, along with the assistance of a strong commission in coming up with a billing that is compensing of all of them so that we can negotiate the best possible rate. I, I still stand fast in saying that there needs to be a, um, a method of accountability when you're spending, uh, approximately one and a half million dollars of taxpayer services. Uh, I will continue to support the Fire and Rescue, uh, both in their efforts and endeavors, and I also will continue to support several of those agencies personally, uh, with my own finances and monetarily. Uh, I do have one other issue with it. It's obvious that there was a desire to eliminate one particular individual, and I have his resume here. If anybody can look at this resume and say this individual's not highly qualified to serve on the commission or have the credentials that are equal to, if not superior to, anyone that you could find within Pennsylvania County, I would challenge to know who they are. And we have many employees, both full-time and part-time, that serve in some capacity on other boards and commissions, but yet we're finding it necessary to eliminate this one individual that would be willing to serve. And for that reasons that I've stated so far, uh, I will not support it tonight, but I promise you guys, I will continue to support you in all of your efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cheshire.
I think I need to set some things straight off some comments that have been made. When I was asked to run, it was not by Fire and Rescue, it was not by Ringo, which I am a member of, it was of the citizens of Mount Hill. So let's get that straight right off the bat. I'm not knowing, I'm not going to be handled by anybody. I'm familiar with these gentlemen. I have run calls for Gretna. I have been on the south side of the county, run all the way to Gretna to do an EMS call several times. These firemen, um, these families, I've been up at two o'clock in the morning, I've seen something, you know, I've seen them, probably some stuff I'd, I would rather not talk about. And I butt heads with some of these gentlemen, even my fire chief. But I will say this, we might butt heads, but when it comes down to what's, what was right, what was wrong, we always did the right thing. We can talk about it later. We can, we can, uh, do what we've got to do, but when it comes down to the, when push comes to shove, who do you trust in that house when it's on fire? Who do you trust on that extrication when somebody's life is, is determining on what you do? As far as transparency, um, I've, what I do presently right now is I enter in all the fire reports, EMS reports that goes to FEMA. There is no darn quota on how many calls we run. If, if that was the case, at fifty calls, I'm sorry, we can't help you. That is a total farce. We answer calls, you know, early in the morning, late at night, on Christmas Day, Thanksgiving Day, where we could be in with our family, but to say that we do a quota is absolutely wrong. And I, it just tears me up that, that even comment would even come out. That's all I got.
Anyone else? Ms. Dudley, please.
Yes, sir. Ms. Chairman, um, I want to thank the Fire and Rescue guys that are here tonight. Let me see your hands that are here. Thank you, guys, for coming out. Share a little story with you. Back in nineteen ninety-nine, um, I was coming into Altavista one evening, um, actually dating the, the lady that I'm married to right now is taking her supper, and, um, there's a young lady coming out of town, bringing supper home to her family. And she was in epileptic, she had an epileptic seizure while she was driving. She hit me head-on, um, I think they estimated sixty-five miles an hour. She was out of control, she didn't know where she was at or what she was doing, basically. And I just want to say a huge thanks. Uh, I'm very grateful for Fire and Rescue. One thing, um, they did do, they helped the young lady all they could, they airlifted her, and she passed away. But they also come, um, tried to help me, uh, got me on an ambulance, I had glass in my eyes, I, I was all boogered up, but after the accident... I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, you just want to take a five-minute reset? You want to take a five-minute reset?
Yes, I can.
You want to take a five-minute reset?
Yes.
It's all right.
Okay. If y'all would, we're going to go back in session.
I was in the middle of a speech.
You were, sir. You resumed.
Tim busted up my chucker game over here.
It was by accident, I promise you.
I'm glad to see he's hanging in there. Fire and Rescue did, they helped me a lot. This accident I was in, not only to get me to the hospital, to the right place, to the right treatment, but they come by my house a week later, several of them, and just checking up on me. And that meant the world to me. Hats off to you guys. And honestly, I do like, I do like how the commission is now, and I'd like to keep it. But either way, you guys do a great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Anyone else?
Yes, sir. I have some comments. Unfortunately, I believe this decision was made on January 4th, and my comments are going to be directed to the public. I want to give you a little history of how this Fire and Rescue Commission was put together. In 2015, you know, November of 2015, a Fire and Rescue study was provided to the county, and it gave us a map to bring our Fire and Rescue agencies up to their optimum levels, to give them the support they deserved. And it was led by someone called Walt Bailey. He came back a little bit later and helped us with the ad hoc committee that put this Fire and Rescue Commission together. It also helped us put together the Public Safety Code that we now have. That process took well over a year. It was painstakingly done. Every issue was quantified. I served on that ad hoc committee, also have served on the Fire and Rescue Commission for the last two years. The way the quadrants were set up, there was a purpose behind it. It was not to give any one agency more power over the smaller departments especially. We had one Fire and Rescue representative per quadrant. We also had a civilian leader from the community in that quadrant. The reason for that was accountability. That was the biggest word in that Fire and Rescue study done in 2015, was accountability. The funny thing is every Fire and Rescue agency hacked off on that Fire and Rescue study in 2015. They also hacked off on the Public Safety Code that we came up with that set up this Fire and Rescue Committee. I think it's reckless, and that's one thing we've been used to for the last two months, is reckless and haphazard decisions, to go about doing this without any interaction with the Fire and Rescue folks, without any interaction with the civilians that are out there. If I were a citizen out there, listening to this decision process, I would be in here jumping up and down. I don't have a problem with the Fire and Rescue folks. I know the job they do, and I've supported them on almost everything that they have done, or that I have voted on in the last six years. What really astounds me is you have this group of fellows, and they tell us to utilize their 990s on the IRS webpage, and I don't want to embarrass any one agency and go through and show them all the discrepancies that's on that. And being on the Fire and Rescue Commission, I never thought a need to go back and do that, but something stinks the way this whole process has been going on. And I went back and looked at a lot of these 990s, and I was surprised at the mistakes. The number of agencies that have zero volunteers and zero employees, or the ones that have all employees, and some had W-2s, some did not, to pay for these salaries. I'm not an accountant. It's not my job to go back and look through all this stuff, but the way this whole thing has turned out, something stinks about it. So I'm definitely not one of the few people, maybe three people, that's going to vote against this initiative. Again, accountability should be, everyone on this board, that should be their priority to the citizens of this county, and right now, we're not getting it. So that's all I have to say. I'm a definite no.
Well, do let me remind you that this change was not about the audits. We've already taken care of that. We've removed that. This was a realignment to make it fair. And if you think what was happening before was fair, when they kicked off Bert Sellers, one of the premier citizens of this county, that when Ringo Fire Department lost their building to a fire, he lent them, free of charge, his construction building. He's been on their board for like 42 years, and somebody that is given sacrificially time and time again. So when you get upset about petty politics, and you kick somebody like Bert Sellers off, don't lecture me about anything else. So this was, so this was all about the alignment, to make it fair. And we made it so fair that even Mr. Skiers would have a vote. And so let me sort of tell you, the people that's already been submitted, that we'll vote on at our next meeting. As far as the four quadrants, the business leaders, in the northeast would be a J.D. Brown. In the southeast, Bert Sellers. Northwest, Kermit King, better known as Peanut. And then the southwest, Steve Stallins, that used to own Stallings Collision. As far as individual appointees by the board members, I'm going to put Ward Rowland, retired state trooper, a lifetime member of the Mount Herman Fire Department, very active in Halifax Fire Department. Mr. Skiers had put up the name of Tim Cassell, so I'd suggest that would be a good pick.
Unfortunately, he has resigned because he was afraid of the comments you made at the last Fire and Rescue Commission meeting.
But he's still interested.
He hasn't talked to me about it, and I'm not going to entertain him after he resigns.
Mr. Warren, Tim Duffer, said he'd like to continue, sir.
I'll take care of Chatham Blas district.
Do what, sir?
I'll take care of the Chatham Blas district.
Got you. So anyway, what I'm saying is that these are really good people that will serve us well, and you do have that vote. So having said that, any other comments? Okay. Gentlemen, cast your vote. And the changes to our ordinance has passed, four to three. Thank you, gentlemen. What about unfinished business? We have any?
We don't have any.
No unfinished business? All right, what about new business? Yes, sir, Mr. Hunt?
Yes, I'm saying we have one item related to the Code of Ethics.
Okay, and that's under new business?
Yes, sir.
Well, thank Ms. Bowman for speaking, because it was just very much needed at this time. And we talked about this and put it on the agenda, and of course, my colleagues will have the opportunity to either vote it up or vote it down. But, you know, we need things in our life to help guide us, and I haven't met a perfect person yet, many of which claim to be. But whether you talk about the Bible, the Constitution, or Code of Ethics, it is something, it is a document in place to teach us how to live and how to treat each other. And regardless of the past, if you're not willing to start over, I don't know what to say. So we decided that we would bring back the Code of Ethics for the Board of Supervisors members. So do I have a motion that we pass the Code of Ethics as introduced?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Cheshire. What about a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barksdale. Any discussion on this? Yes, sir. Mr. Warren?
Ms. Bowman knows how much I respect her and how much admiration I have for her and her entire family. But unfortunately, based on what I've experienced over the last several years of behavior, even by some that is in favor of putting the Code of Ethics back in, I will not be supporting it until I see a change in the fact that we are actually honoring our current bylaws and procedures. They obviously were not honored at our organizational meeting. What an embarrassment to publicly terminate someone. I don't have any problems with someone exercising their rights to terminate somebody, but to do it publicly and have people applaud, it doesn't affect one individual when they terminated, it affects an entire family. So I had a big problem with that. And then turn around and make motions that would have put the county in a breach of contract, and certainly sent the wrong message to anyone that would be interested in doing business with Pennsylvania County. And so until those things change, I cannot support this. Something as petty as the bylaws call for certain guidelines within the seating arrangement of the Board of Supervisors. I personally love where I'm sitting. But just as a point to all of you all, that is not being honored. There are several other items, but I don't want to be a negative throwing down and hurting the county, so I'm going to keep all of those to myself. But I will not support it until we come in line with our current bylaws and do the right thing. We attempted to request a circuit court judge to reverse her decision, and it was her decision, not our decision. At the last meeting, which shined a terrible light again on the county, the individual that was serving had already served a term and was up for renewal, and it's along, I guess, the same lines that Mr. Ingram had a passion about with Mr. Sellers, who he is correct, is a fine gentleman. But for those reasons, I'm sorry, Ms. Bowman, I love you, but I can't support that tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Any other comments?
I have a couple of questions for our county attorney. I want to ask you a hypothetical, say, item two concerns with following all federal, state, and local laws. Do we have the ability right now to bring those kind of charges up in the middle of the board meeting, or add that to the agenda to ask that? If you have, say, the proof of someone that testified in a federal court case and committed perjury, and you have the proof that he did that, would that be appropriate now, without these ethics?
Well, I think it's kind of a ridiculous hypothetical, but we don't prosecute criminal perjury charges. If you believe that has happened, you as an individual citizen can certainly seek whatever authority you believe he's violated and get them to attempt to enforce it.
What kind of begs a question, it's in the new ethics that we're getting ready to install. So what good is it if there's no teeth behind anything that this board does with these ethic policies? I'm just trying to get my head around why are we doing this when there's no enforcement except for a censure, and we all know how well a censure does to embarrass people on this board. So I kind of think this is a waste of time, so I'll definitely be voting no on this.
Any other comments? Okay, gentlemen, cast your votes. Okay. Motion's passed, four to three. Thank you, gentlemen. What about unfinished business? We have any?
We don't have any.
No unfinished business? All right, what about new business? Yes, sir, Mr. Hunt?
Yes, I'm saying we have one item related to the Code of Ethics.
Okay, and that's under new business?
Yes, sir.
Well, thank Ms. Bowman for speaking, because it was just very much needed at this time, and we talked about this and put it on the agenda. And of course, my colleagues will have the opportunity to either vote it up or vote it down. But, you know, we need things in our life to help guide us, and I haven't met a perfect person yet, many of which claim to be. But whether you talk about the Bible, the Constitution, or Code of Ethics, it is something, it is a document in place to teach us how to live and how to treat each other. And regardless of the past, if you're not willing to start over, I don't know what to say. So we decided that we would bring back the Code of Ethics for the Board of Supervisors members. So do I have a motion that we pass the Code of Ethics as introduced?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Cheshire. What about a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barksdale. Any discussion on this? Yes, sir. Mr. Warren?
Ms. Bowman knows how much I respect her and how much admiration I have for her and her entire family. But unfortunately, based on what I've experienced over the last several years of behavior, even by some that is in favor of putting the Code of Ethics back in, I will not be supporting it until I see a change in the fact that we are actually honoring our current bylaws and procedures. They obviously were not honored at our organizational meeting. What an embarrassment to publicly terminate someone. I don't have any problems with someone exercising their rights to terminate somebody, but to do it publicly and have people applaud, it doesn't affect one individual when they terminated, it affects an entire family. So I had a big problem with that. And then turn around and make motions that would have put the county in a breach of contract, and certainly sent the wrong message to anyone that would be interested in doing business with Pennsylvania County. And so until those things change, I cannot support this. Something as petty as the bylaws call for certain guidelines within the seating arrangement of the Board of Supervisors. I personally love where I'm sitting. But just as a point to all of you all, that is not being honored. There are several other items, but I don't want to be a negative throwing down and hurting the county, so I'm going to keep all of those to myself. But I will not support it until we come in line with our current bylaws and do the right thing. We attempted to request a circuit court judge to reverse her decision, and it was her decision, not our decision. At the last meeting, which shined a terrible light again on the county, the individual that was serving had already served a term and was up for renewal, and it's along, I guess, the same lines that Mr. Ingram had a passion about with Mr. Sellers, who he is correct, is a fine gentleman. But for those reasons, I'm sorry, Ms. Bowman, I love you, but I can't support that tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Any other comments?
I have a couple of questions for our county attorney. I want to ask you a hypothetical, say, item two concerns with following all federal, state, and local laws. Do we have the ability right now to bring those kind of charges up in the middle of the board meeting, or add that to the agenda to ask that? If you have, say, the proof of someone that testified in a federal court case and committed perjury, and you have the proof that he did that, would that be appropriate now, without these ethics?
Well, I think it's kind of a ridiculous hypothetical, but we don't prosecute criminal perjury charges. If you believe that has happened, you as an individual citizen can certainly seek whatever authority you believe he's violated and get them to attempt to enforce it.
What kind of begs a question, it's in the new ethics that we're getting ready to install. So what good is it if there's no teeth behind anything that this board does with these ethic policies? I'm just trying to get my head around why are we doing this when there's no enforcement except for a censure, and we all know how well a censure does to embarrass people on this board. So I kind of think this is a waste of time, so I'll definitely be voting no on this.
Any other comments? Okay, gentlemen, cast your votes. Okay. Motion's passed, four to three. Thank you. Mr. Cheshire needs to leave. Can we take just a couple of minutes and let him get down and get out?
It's fine. It may be easier to go out that back way, there's a door that goes right, ground level, on the left.
We're good.[1367.12]
for the Board of Supervisors members. Uh, so do I have a motion that we pass the Code of Ethics as introduced?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Cheshire. What about a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barksdale. Any, uh, discussion on this? Yes, sir. Mr. Warren?
Uh, Ms. Bowman knows how much I respect her and how much admiration I have for her and her entire family. Uh, but unfortunately, based on what I've experienced over the last several years of behavior, even by some that is in favor of putting the Code of Ethics back in, I will not be supporting it until I see a change in the fact that we are actually honoring our current bylaws and procedures. Uh, they obviously were not honored at our organizational meeting. What an embarrassment to publicly terminate someone. I don't have any problems with, uh, someone exercising their rights to terminate somebody, but to do it publicly and have people applaud, uh, it doesn't affect one individual when they are terminated. It affects an entire family. So I had a big problem with that. And then turn around and make motions that would have put the county in a breach of contract, and certainly sent the wrong message to anyone that would be interested in doing business with Pennsylvania County. Uh, and then so until those things change, I cannot support this. The byl-, uh, something as petty as the bylaws call for, uh, certain guidelines within the seating arrangement of the Board of Supervisors. I personally love where I'm sitting, but just as a point to all of you all, that is not being honored. There are several other items, but I don't wanna be a negative throwing down and hurting the county, so I'm gonna keep all of those to myself, but I will not support it until we come in line with our current bylaws and do the right thing. We attempted to request a circuit court judge to reverse her decision, and it was her decision, not our decision. At the last meeting, which shined a terrible light again on the county, the individual that was serving had already served a term and was up for renewal, and, uh, it's along, I guess, the same lines that Mr. Ingram had a passion about with Mr. Sellers, who he is correct, is a fine gentleman. But for those reasons, I'm sorry, Ms. Bowman, I love you, but I can't support that tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Any other comments?
I have a couple of questions for our county attorney. If, I wanna ask you a hypothetical, say, item two concerns with following all federal, state, and local laws. Do we have the ability right now to bring those kind of charges up in the middle of the board meeting, or, or add that to the agenda to ask that, uh, if you have, say, the proof of someone that testified in a federal court case and committed perjury, and you have the proof that he did that, would that be appropriate now without these ethics?
Well, I think it's, it's kind of a ridiculous hypothetical, but, um, we don't prosecute criminal perjury charges. If you believe that has happened, uh, you as an individual citizen can, can certainly seek whatever authority you believe, uh, he's violated and to get them to attempt to enforce it.
What kind of begs a question, it's in the new ethics that we're getting ready to install. So what good is it if, if there's no teeth behind anything that this board does with these ethic policies? I, I'm just trying to get my head around why are we doing this when there's no enforcement except for a censure, and, and we all know how well the censure does to make, embarrass people on this board. So I, I gotta think this is a waste of time, so I'll definitely be voting no on this.
Any other comments? Okay, gentlemen, cast your votes. Okay. Motion's passed four to three. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Cheshire needs to leave. Can we take just a couple of minutes and let him get down and get out?
It's fine. It, it, it may be easier to go out that back way. There's a door that goes right, ground level, on the left.
Convening.
Thank you to the Fire and Rescue. Appreciate you guys. Yes, indeed.
Is there any question how valuable y'all are? Okay, moving right along. Uh, let's see, matters from the work session.
All right, we are down to the Gretna Library appropriation.
Okay.
Is that gonna roll up on our screen?
It's not coming up over here.
I can go ahead and start it.
Yeah.
These are items to be voted on from the, our workshop session.
Kim, I believe if I'm correct, that was to appropriate 300,000?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, okay. Can you make the motion?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Fire away.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve, uh, the library funding as presented at the work session that we've already discussed.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Any, any comments on that? Well, that's good. Thank you, Lisa.
I, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I, listen, stand up a second. Anybody that goes out at her and her committee and staff and raises 400 and some thousand dollars to assist with a project like that, thank you very much. They all should be done that way. So, all you, uh, taxpaying citizens in Pennsylvania County, give that lady a call and thank her.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Warren.
The school, but we need you.
Lisa, thank you. Good job. Okay, any other discussion? All right, cast your votes.
All right, I'm gonna try to set Mr. Cheshire's as him being away. I don't think it's gonna work, but we do have six yes votes.
Yeah. Okay, that passes, uh, with six votes. Great, thank you. All right, what else we have?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the, uh, internship program as presented during the work session, uh, and continue that process.
I agree, and I'll second that. I can, can I?
I'll second.
Beat you.
Okay, you got it.
Uh, any discussion about that, the internship program? Any comments? All right, good deal. Gentlemen, cast your votes. And that passes, uh, with six votes. Any other items?
That's all.
That's it? Great, okay. Uh, board member reports. Let me start with you, Mr. Skiers.
Just wanted to thank everyone that supported the banquet for the Friends of NRA. We sold all our tickets out. It's gonna be on the 25th or 24th, I believe, a Thursday at the Ag Center, so I'm looking forward to seeing all those that support it as worthy cause.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Barksdale?
Going to see the citizens here tonight.
Uh, it's a good turnout. Thank y'all. Mr. Dudley?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, folks, um, keep Tim Cheshire in prayer, okay? Let's do that. Promise him we'd be praying for him. Uh, those of you that do pray, pray for him, okay? And let's lift him up. Fire Departments, um, Fire and EMS, you guys just lift each other up. Thank you so much for coming out. Um, my wife and I, and, um, the mayor of Hurt, Gary Hahn, that we fed children back, you know, when the pandemic started. You remember, Vic, that I would give a report almost every, about every month?
Yes, sir.
Well, my wife and I was, uh, at the house, and, and we discussed spring break, uh, coming up sometime in March, and we have decided to, I've contacted, had a meeting today with, um, Ms. Fields, uh, with Mount Ari, she's a principal, and, um, also Ms. Lowry, the principal of, uh, Hurt Elementary, and we're gonna start helping, um, some of these children that's on the backpack program. And, um, the reason I say that, you know, you have a spring break, you may have a week off, and like we said during the pandemic when they was not going to school, some of the kids, if they don't go to school, they don't eat healthy or eat good. So, um, we still had some funds left, um, that, that was, uh, in feed to children, um, and that's what our plans are. We're gonna really concentrate on Mount Ari, uh, and we're gonna help, uh, Hurt School too. But I think, you know, us as Board Supervisors, sometimes, often, people think that we are to be served, but I think we need to serve our people too, and those folks, like the young kids that cannot help themselves. Um, I think it's weight on my heart to help the children, and that's what we're gonna do. So, um, probably in the next couple of weeks, we're gonna start it up and, um, help feed, um, some local young ones that, that's in need, so. And, uh, appreciate everybody that come out tonight. Thank you so much. Um, again, let's lift each other up, especially Tim, as he's going through this sickness. Put him on your prayer list at church. Call somebody, and just let them know that, um, you know, we got somebody that's in need, and we wanna help. So, thank you so much, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Dudley. Uh, Mr. Warren?
Uh, yes, sir. Just have a couple of comments. I too do wanna thank, uh, our Fire and Rescue folks, uh, for the outstanding work they do. Uh, also wanna thank the staff for a very productive afternoon. You all do a great job, and, uh, appreciate, uh, that. Um, I was telling Ms. McCluster as we were talking when Mr. Cheshire, uh, had to leave the first time. Uh, those situations when folks are dealing with, uh, some kind of health issue, don't know what it is, but, uh, they dealing with a health issue, it brings it in perspective that, not to say what we all do is not important, but it lines it up with putting it in perspective that in relationship to your health and well-being, what we do day to day is really not that important. Uh, so please, please, keep him in your prayers.
Amen.
And keep his family in your prayers, um, because we know there is still someone in the miracle business.
Absolutely.
So I'm just, uh, begging you to, and I've only known Mr. Cheshire a few months, but, uh, what I, what I know of him, I knew his father for a number of years. Uh, I think he's, um, you know, I think he comes from a good family, and I think he's a good man. So please, again, keep him in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Dalton?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd also like to echo the comments about Mr. Chessel. Keep him in your thoughts and prayers. He's going through a rough time right now. I wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight. Had a wonderful crowd. Uh, the Fire and Rescue, I can't say thank you enough. Um, I was invited to Gretna's banquet, also Blas banquet this past week. Wonderful, wonderful crowd, great bunch of people, uh, had a good time there. And again, I just wanna thank everybody for everything you do. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, you may not know Karen Love, but, um, she's, uh, not a very young lady, but she just got a brand new heart the other day. She's a daughter to James and Doc Paul, and, uh, just a true miracle. But, uh, last month, I wanna apologize, I forgot to recognize Mr. Clarence Monday as our interim county administrator, and it's so good to have you back. And, um, I just wanna thank you for being willing to, to come back around in service and to leave that, uh, wonderful house that you have at the beach to hang out with us. I wonder why, but thank you so much, and, and I'll come back to you in a second. But I, I, again, I do wanna echo our concerns for Tim, and, and do keep him in your thoughts and prayers. Um, so having said that, county administrator reports.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you very much. I'd just like to remind the board and our citizens that we are entering budget season, whether we want to or not, but that time is here with us. And with that, there comes a timeline that we have to adhere to so we can get to the end result that we're looking for. The staff will bring you, the board, a draft budget and a recommended budget next month, in March, and then in April, you will have a public hearing, and then shortly thereafter, you will be asked to adopt a budget, set the tax rate for the upcoming fiscal year, and that will give our commissioner revenue and the treasurer the time they need to get the tax tickets generated, out, and then the deadline here upon us. So again, we're going into budget season. We know that we'll be working you pretty hard, maybe with some special meetings to do the public hearing, to hear the budget and so forth, but that information will be forthcoming soon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hunt, you have anything?
No, sir.
Already, having said that, I declare this meeting a